Good evening, Rolling Meadows. Tonight is the committee, the whole of the city of Rolling Meadows, July 17, 2018, beginning at 7:30. Mr. Crumstock, I'm informed that you will start us off this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. For this committee, a whole meeting, obviously, we have three items. The first one, obviously, staff has written pretty detailed where we are finding a facts, where we are actually sitting at this process. Obviously, before members come out and do their presentation, and I know that certain aldermen have actually seen this presentation at the Planning and Zoning Commission recently, but I just want to reiterate to people, it's really discussion tonight, following and during the PowerPoint presentation, that should be roughly 15 minutes, so quickly. Just listen, ask your questions, ask for clarifications. Please stay to the german subjects that are actually in for this, the overall presentation. It's been some time since certain aldermen have seen the overall presentations. Obviously, in the write-up that we do talk about, the comprehensive plan, we do talk about where we are with some of our ordinances at this point in time. Obviously, City Attorney Jim McCall is here to do any additional clarifications, but it really is a presentation for hopefully, just listening, clarifications, and understanding where we actually sit. Attorney Khan was going to be here, but he's actually not present tonight, so Attorney Pareka is actually going to do the quick presentation. There's also, obviously, some members that many of you know, they did bring some of the bigger pictures, but the biggest point is before you is the full presentation, so hopefully you take it, you look at it, and go over it, but that is our quick intro for this item before they actually start.
How much time do we have, roughly? 15 minutes, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make this presentation on behalf of the Islamic Society of Northwest Suburbs. My name is Anthony Pareka. I'm one of the attorneys working with the non-for-profit organization on this particular project. I will give you a brief overview and just to highlight some of the things from the overhead projections that will be flashed, and then, no problem. And then I will introduce the architect working on the project to present his summary comments, and then I will sum up, and we can then answer any questions that you have in particular. So the current, also, I want to say from a procedural standpoint that we know that this is on the July 24 agenda for the city council meeting. We'd like to get this moved to the August 14 agenda, if possible, and if there's no objection because of the additional workup that's being done here, as well as Mr. Khan's participation. He's traveling abroad, having fun, so I'm pinch-hitting tonight, and I would like to have him present there as well. So, to begin, this is an application that seeks approval of the text amendment and special use permit for 1200 Hicks Road in Rolling Meadows. ISNS has been a resident and a participating organization in this community for many years, 32 years. They have been at this particular location, at 3980 Industrial Drive, where they're currently located since 1986, and have been a good community member, providing a whole host of services, which I will highlight some of, over the decades. If their application for text amendment and special use permit is approved for the 1200 Hicks Road address, they plan to move all of their operation to 1200 Hicks Road, and they do not anticipate, again, moving within the M1 manufacturing district at all. I mean, this is a move that comes after 32 years being in the same location. So, they are committed to the new plans, they want to be a good neighbor in the city at large, as well as to the neighbors who are in the area of their particular facility, and we want to cover some of the reasons that we have here. So, looking at the agenda for today, we're going to have, you know, brief comments, which I just gave, reasons for re-appeal, proposed plan benefits, proposed plan roadmap, zoning text amendment, impact analysis, and community support letters which have been gathered. ISNS submission statement, as you can see here, is to provide a community environment for families to come together with a shared interest to pray, learn, and serve in order to cultivate youth to become God-conscious, law-abiding, and contributing members of the society. Their membership, as you can see from this map, is a particular boundary covering north, southeast, and west parameters, which includes a host of communities within it. On page five, you can see those, Rolling Meadows, obviously, which is the home base, Palatine, Arlington Heights, Schaumburg, Hoffman Estates, Inverness, Barrington, Long Grove, Mount Prospect, Lake Zurich, Wheeling, and Buffalo Grove. In the lower right-hand quarter, we have highlighted the fact that some of the other mosques, which are in the area, are some distance away, so there will be no direct competition with any particular houses or worship that are already in existence. In terms of the governance and operations, being a non-for-profit, 501(c)(3) corporation, the ISNS is governed by 13 elected board members who have two-year terms. They're elected among the membership, and they serve on a voluntary basis without compensation. They have several committees and ad hoc committees, which are chaired by board members and community members, including adult education, outreach, community partnership, and interfaith relations, religious services and women's group, social services, children's education, building operations, fundraising, youth, communication, and eat affairs, and library function. The services that, the religious services that ISNS provides on a regular basis have daily five prayers at various hours. Friday, they have two prayers, at 1 o'clock and 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Yearly Ramadan services, those vary depending on when Ramadan is called, or falls on, and of course, Sunday school for youngsters. They have outreach programs, and they partner with churches on social events, other denominations and faiths. They have adult education programs, as I said, women programs, youth development, charity for the poor, civic engagement with parades, voter registration, charity for the poor, college prep test tutoring, at large, not only for members, and summer camp, which they run every summer, when the schools are out. Next page, eight, provides kind of a key milestone outline of ISNS being established back in 1985 formally, and then acquiring their first property at 3980 Industrial Drive in 86. In 2004, they purchased 3950 Industrial Avenue. The city of Rolling Meadows approved that move in '05. There's leasing, ISNS then leased 320 parking spaces at 1200 Hicks Road when L3 was there. Two-lane driveway was shared with adjacent property. In 2016, ISNS then sold 3890 Industrial to tax-paying business. ISNS purchased 1200 Hicks Road, including the leased lot. Application was then made for amendment to allow religious entities a special use in M1 district, which at the time was voted down four to three. And the property was listed for sale, but there were no serious offers, although there were some letters of intent that came in. Over the years, ISNS has grown substantially in terms of members attending Friday prayers, Sunday activities, and in terms of growth, membership went from 50 in '86 to 100 in '04, 200 members in 2016, so it's not a out-of-control growth, it's a measured growth depending on the normal demographic flows and the population shifts in the northwest suburbs. Going on to the next page, you will see the summary of the sale effort made for 1200 Hicks Road location by ISNS. And it's important to know, as we've noted here, that the building has 47,000 square feet. Land is less than four acres. Four acres is already, in tax exempt, used by current INS location, covering the parking and pond area. So really, it's not an eight-acre loss of manufacturing, it's more four acres that are being affected by tax-exempt religious use, not eight. And here you have sort of an arc of activities engaged by ISNS with interested parties regarding the location at 1200. Finally, in July of 17, they decided to re-appeal the effort and initiated the building plan re-architecture, which the architect will cover in detail in connection with this re-appeal. Looking at the following slide here, which is key reasons for re-appeal, ISNS has been a good, functioning member of the Rolling Meadows community for over 30 years. There is precedent for religious use in M1 districts, and it's been shown throughout Cook County, and at large, that it can be done in a safe manner. We also have with us a control engineer, traffic engineer, rather, I should say, who also is available to answer any particular question regarding the traffic inflow and outflow. The two-year traffic study has proven to be that this is an efficient traffic use of the property. ISNS owns the property outright, meets the city parking requirements in terms of the membership and visitation of the site. The new redesigned improved site plan provides for efficient traffic flow for this particular and from this particular location, at 1200 Hicks Road, and the traffic engineer, as I said, can talk more in detail, in case anyone is interested about that. The landscaping would vastly improve Hicks Road in terms of planted vegetation and landscaping in association with the development or redevelopment of the site if the plan is approved. Changes are made per plan's commission's recommendation, so all of the concerns and issues that were raised in the past were dealt with on a proactive basis by the re-appeal plan, and I believe successfully and appropriately addressed. The internal building use will be optimized. Building plan is redesigned will meet the basic ISNS current and future needs in terms of regular, constant incremental growth that they expect will occur over time. It eliminates current space issues regarding Friday prayers in particular, and of course, yearly Ramadan prayers, when the attendance is most numerous, as well as weekly Sunday school. It fills the gap for the UGIM in current facility, and it will continue the contract that they have with the police department for traffic control and safety, as they have done on an annual basis now for a number of years. Tax burden, as a nonprofit, the real estate tax bill is roughly about $110,000 per year. That will obviously continue to be paid. Any loss in terms of this four acre that would be non-for-profit, we estimate that the portion that goes to Rolling Meadows is something like 10%, 12% of that 110,000 annual tax bill, and, you know, the half of that would be, you know, somewhere around $7,000 perhaps, which I think can be made up through other activities to cover that potential loss as a result of a nonprofit use of that four acre roughly portion of the property. So at this point, I'm going to stop and introduce Mr. Jahidi, who is the architect, who will give you some details for and comments regarding the plan themselves and all of the particulars that go with that. Mr. Jahidi.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening. My name is Jamshit Jahidi, with Home Structural Engineers, 105 Ogden Avenue, Clarendon Hills, Illinois. Coming a long way here to see if I can help with the owner. Our office has been relatively heavily involved in the design and development of the community centers all in the DuPage, all around the DuPage County, mostly mosques, and we were, we came or joined the team a little late last year, when I confronted a frustrated ISNS group trying to, at one end, to sell the property, and on the other end, trying to see if they can do something with the existing property that they have by exchanging maybe the parking lot, and a lot of confusing ideas that they have due to the frustration. I took a look at the existing building that they have, the industrial building in 1200 Hicks Road, and I suggested that maybe we can improve the building, that building is a kind of outdated building for the industrial activities for these days. It has a very low ceiling height, relatively many columns in there, and the overall, I thought, it can actually be used as a community center in a much better way than the industrial. The area that was going to go for sale is actually half of the property, only four acres, so there were not enough buyers for this. I also suggested that we improve the site plan quite a bit by changing a few things. First, we decided to move the entrance of the building from the south side all the way to the north side of the property. This way, we avoided the influence line of the left turn line or lane which goes to the industrial road, and this would be an improvement. Although we kept the existing driveway as a second or emergency drive for the fire department with a gates which can be openable only by the fire department. This way, we improved a number of things on the site. That we gave a long queue line within the property, this one doesn't show here, I'm trying to just pinpoint some of the things on the picture to the left. But this is the existing roadway or entrance that we moved it all the way to the north side, and therefore, we created a long driveway or the queue line for both inbound and outbound and internal traffic here. We also improved the internal traffic and turnaround inside the building, inside the site, and with a drop-off in front of the building. We also calculated for the fire truck and all the turnaround all the way so that it can work in a much better shape. We have a lot of landscaping in front along the Hicks Road. We created a very heavy strawberry and a dense landscaping between this very ugly junkyard, I would call it, and the auto yard and our property. This is the existing, by the way, this is the existing building of the ISNS, and this is the parking lot which belonged to the ISNS as a rental property. The only access to this parking lot used to be through this roadway, which is between this auto repair property and ISNS, and this is a highly contested situation that the city of Rolling Meadows are very well aware of that. We are going to close this roadway at this point totally. Therefore, this whole problem is resolved. We are going to also landscape it so that it's totally different from, separate from this one visually, and then, of course, at some time, as soon as possible, we are going to sell the existing property and move to this property. In this property, we have a driver, or I call it a parking lot in the northern neighborhood, which has some truck parking, right, very adjacent to the building. And we are going to have also a fire exit lane right behind that building, north side all the way to the Hicks Road. We are going to provide some kind of highway barricade so that some of the concern of the village staff concerning the maybe lack of safety of this area would be resolved, and we already talked about that in detail in the zoning and planning commission. We add more than the landscaping around the detention pond. By doing that, we get an ample amount of parking for the building itself and the other activities that can go in there. By itself would reduce any parking problem in the future as well. The number of the parking which we need is somewhere around 180 for the mosque, and another 180 for other facilities that we have, which is the gymnasium, Sunday school, and a multipurpose hall. The overall, we would need probably around 360 parking while we have the inventory of 510 parking lots. So we are way beyond the allowed capacity, which is a good thing. Originally, we started based on some suggestions to start with the fence around the property, but later on, we decided to go with a heavy strawberry in order to create a more safety zone for the people in this community center compared to the activities around. Beyond that, the lighting, we are adding a number of lighting around the, in the new area of the parking that we are adding, as well as around the building walls, and I think that would be the site plan that we will create. The building, going to the building, if you pass a couple of here, these are, by the way, just go one slide back, this is some excerpts from the traffic study, impact study, which all of them passes with a colorful results as far as the impact on the Hicks Road, impact on the industrial road, and impact just at the driveway entrance for the building itself, and as well as also the internal traffic. All of them has A-plus numbers on that, and you can read it, you have it on your package as well. The next slide is the building, after we did some architectural design on that, what we did, we took an old building, relatively unused, industrially unused building, and we tried to create a beautiful architecture without really making a loud noise in the industrial neighborhood. So it is still within the atmosphere of the industrial, but it has some volumes, as you see on the ceiling, we have some skylights to bring the light inside the building, and making it a lively environment to use. If you go to the next slide, these are some of the elevations of the building as it is visible from the Hicks Road south toward north. So the first one on the top is in the southwest view of the camera, and then later on, it's right in front of the building. It is glass and metal, and with the brick that we have, and we are just trying to mix it with the industrial environment while we give it a very pleasant view of the building. This is the building plan and what we were told to create here. Again, I don't see it here, the best thing is to change that plan on the tripod if you want to. Thank you. This plan, as we see, consists of four different areas. The white part is the mosque area, the yellow part is school, Sunday school, green part is a gymnasium, and the brown part is a multipurpose area. There is a phasing to that, it is shown, let me just say a little further in that plan if you will, and I'm going to show it on this map again in the back. There is a very tiny little legend in the upper or lower right corner of the plan which shows the phasing of this building. The phasing, the white part and the yellow part are the phase one of the building that are going to be built, I show it in the next slide. The green part is the second phase, which is the gymnasium, and the brown part is the third phase of the building that I'll explain in the next slide, and that's the multipurpose. If you look at the roadmap of the ISNS, the way that they look at it at this time, if it is approved, the planning and zoning, we expect to be finished on the 2018, and then the phase one, which as I mentioned, is the white part and the yellow part together, we expect to have an occupancy between 2020 and 2021. That would include the site plan, prayer hall for the men and women, the Sunday school, some office room which spread in the mosque and the school, and at the same time, the plan or the, make sure that 3950 Industrial Road, the other building, will be sold by this 2020 and 2021. And the phase two would be the gymnasium that would be, it's planned for use on 2022, and the third phase would be the multipurpose, which is planned for 2023. With this, I conclude my word and I'll go back to Tony again to continue the whole thing.
Thank you. So what is it that ISNS is asking for in terms of zoning change? They're asking for an approval of a text amendment to allow all churches, places of worship, and community centers along with their ancillary activities as a special use within an M1 manufacturing district and an approval of a special use in an M1 manufacturing district for a place of worship and community center for in particular ISNS at 1200 Hicks Road. Some of these issues on the next page, I already covered, so I won't go into detail unless there are questions about it, we can cover it. But it's important, again, to note that out of the annual real estate tax bill of 110,000, roughly 10 to 12% is allocated to municipal government. The rest is going to schools, including college district and library, police board, library rather, and park districts. So the impact, considering the, you know, the four acre site, is going to be, we think, rather minimal. In addition, as you can see under guidance in terms of the federal and state legislation that governs these requests, the tax impact is not a proper consideration. But we know in this era of tight fiscal management that many municipalities, counties, townships, state included, are facing that revenue is an important factor, even though it is not a consideration under RUPA, either federal or state statutes. The benefits is that, as you saw from the photographs and from the drawings that were projected, it will improve the site tremendously in terms of visual aesthetic appeal. It will provide support for local businesses by people who are visiting the site. Obviously, they will gas up their cars, they would patronize the restaurants, they would engage in other commercial activity to and from and around the site. Sales taxes will be generated to City of Rolling Meadows. Motor fuel taxes will be generated. Residential real estate taxes, as I talked about, will be continually paid on the area that is not related to the non-for-profit use. We ran some numbers in terms of impact and mitigation, and you can see that, and we can cover that in questions if you have any. Next slide here shows in terms of land use considerations that we understand that the city is now looking at a redrafting or revisiting of its long-term comprehensive plan, which is always a good thing on at least once per decade basis. But the plan does identify churches as activity generators for the northwest industrial park. Also, just by the way of comment, we listed, for example, here over the last few years, the City of Rolling Meadows has approved two text amendments and special uses within a M1 manufacturing district for dance studio, medical facility, fine art, and tattoo studio. There are other places, not within the district but nearby, which operate as well in close proximity to the manufacturing district. We listed three of those, which are religious neighbors of ISNS. ISNS is currently in this district and has been for more than 30 years. No safety, health, or welfare issues were reported since 1986. I think that's a very good record. And their existence there has not been a, has not jeopardized in any way either health, safety, or welfare. Only ISNS as a religious non-for-profit organization has requested a special use in M1 district for the past 30 years. And as shown at the bottom here, they are one of the organizations that were listed in the Daily Herald as 60 Things to Love About Rolling Meadows. Part of the application packet also contains letters of support, which I'm sure you have received from local businesses, Rolling Meadows residents, employees in the adjacent area, 300 resident support petitions, as well as members of Christian, Jewish, and other religions, ministers who are in support of this application. So with that, if you have questions about traffic, we have the traffic engineer here. Would you like him to answer any questions about that in specific points?
I think what they'll do at this time is I'm going to open it up for questions of clarification from the council.
Fair.
So if someone would like to start. Anyone, questions or clarification on the presentation?
We've got a sterling jet.
Sterling jet. We'll now move on to the.
Thank you very much.
We have two folks in on the sign-in sheet tonight. The council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are only on the agenda tonight. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council, keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole, to the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. The first segmentary is Dale Ekking.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about the church.
Thank you.
Is it on?
Thank you.
Yeah. Talk closer, huh?
We just want to hear your voice, Dale.
Okay. No, I'm not against the religion, I'm not against the church. The only thing that does concern me is they're looking for an application to have a religious facility in any part of the M1 district. And then they're coming in for a special use permit to have their facility on 1200 or 2200 industrial, or Hicks Road. As far as nobody wanting to buy the property, I was at the planning commission and we had a gentleman speak that owns the property right next door, and he is willing to purchase the property, but not at the price that they want. It's the same thing Clark Street Development did. Buy for a million and a half and want to sell for eight million. I don't know what they purchased the property for, but I'm sure they want twice, three times what they want for it. So as far as, as far as that goes, there are buyers. And I heard from other people too, that there are other individuals that are interested in the property. So to say that there's nobody interested is not truthful. As far as the taxing, I don't know how the four acres got tax exempt where the pond is and the parking. Because it is a sizable eight acre site. And for us to lose, you know, the tax base on it again, and yeah, it's only a small portion goes to the city. But now we're looking at what we're taking away from the schools, the library, the park district. So in fact, it will impact the City of Rolling Meadows residents more than just the city portion of the tax. So I don't know. Like I said, it's a beautiful building. I have nothing against the religion or the people. I've talked to some of them, they're great people. I just think that, you know, they've moved twice, and now they want to move again. And now with them wanting it to be in any part of the M1 district, I just think is wrong. So my recommendation is, you know, that it shouldn't be approved. Thanks for your time.
And thank you for coming forward to speak tonight. The next segmentory is Jeanie, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll have you correct me on the last name.
Janine Konkaleski.
Okay. Thank you, Jean.
Aesthetically, I think the architects did a beautiful job. It really is pretty.
The city clerk, could you just spell your last name?
Oh, yeah. K O N, K O L, E W, S K I. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Reasons that I think that we shouldn't approve for the Islamic Society of Northwest Suburbs move is, first off, as Dale had mentioned, the tax base. You're going to get a larger tax base with a larger area than the smaller tax base that would come from the smaller one that they're in now. So we are losing stuff for our community, number one. And secondly, info that I know I had shared with Mr. Diaz's coming through the mayor here, Mr. Rooney had extended a courtesy to them before, and they said that they wouldn't be asking for more, but now they are asking for more. And I'm not sure what they're, what they're meaning by asking for all churches. I'm not understanding, they didn't expand upon that, but that could open a can of worms for us. So I'm not sure what their intention was, meaning for all churches to come in. And just on a side note, that our planning committee did defeat this six to two. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward to speak to us tonight. Is there any discussion on this item?
Thank you. I was in favor of this last time ISNS came in front of us, and I haven't changed my mind. I'm kind of amazed how much work went into the redesign and moving of the entrance. And as I said last time, when I was young, we started in a house church, went to a storefront church, and we eventually built the church in the county seat. So as far as we're not going to move again, this is the sort of thing where life happens, your church grows and it outgrows the place that you thought you'd be in forever, so it's a move. As far as speculating about what the purchase price was and what a fair sell price is, I do remember the Clark Street, and I remember, I remember saying, and I still believe this, those folks are willing to write a check for the property, and they got it, now they can do what they want to it in regard to Clark Street. And that's kind of my attitude about when you write a check for a piece of property. They've done the math, the net is a loss to the city, but below 10,000. So I'm not saying that's not a lot of money, but we're a fairly decent sized city, that's not a lot of money. And as far as, as far as the pluses they're bringing, traffic control for one was a big one for me. Eliminating that back portion when they unload that 3950 property is going to alleviate a lot of problems. And I actually have heard about, about the problematic nature of just the design to get through there to that back parking lot. So that'll, that'll be a tremendous relief off of that road in front of their current building. So all in all, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. I haven't changed much since the last time. The last time, though, it was simply a zoning variance, and I'm, and I'm still in favor of a zoning variance, not so much a text amendment. I did a little research this past week about, and this is just a quick Google search, in terms of churches in industrial parks, and some cities have been stung by making blanket rules where any religious organization can move into anywhere, because there are some churches with deep pockets. And once again, the unintended consequence of doing something with a text amendment would be a big property being taken off of the tax rule because you have a megachurch come in and it, and they can use, you know, a high rise. So I'm not sure, I feel good about a text amendment, a one-off variance, I'm totally in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banjer. Is there any other discussion on the item?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Who would you, who?
I guess the lawyer, I guess, would be fine.
Thank you.
So as you're well known, we turned this down a couple of years ago.
Right.
What I'm, well, I'm confused by a couple of things, and maybe you can enlighten me.
Sure.
So when we turned it down, why would this society still come back and buy it anyhow? Knowing we just got done turning it down?
Well, it wasn't just. It was some years ago, and in terms of.
It was two to three, exactly.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And in terms of the special use request, in fact, the planning and zoning committee, which I was in attendance for, approved that five to three with one abstention. They did vote six to two, as was mentioned by one of the citizens, on the text amendment. But special use to allow this.
I would correct you on that, that's not the correct interpretation of that vote.
Well, I wrote it down, I was there.
They wrote, they voted five to three.
Right.
But they didn't vote to approve it. They said they would approve it if we changed the text amendment as a city council.
It was a five to three yes vote with one abstention. For the special use to allow religious use of property at 1200 Hicks Road.
I guess I would ask for a clarification from our lawyer.
My recollection is the planning and zoning commission voted against, or did not recommend the text amendment, but did alternatively vote in favor of granting the special use provided the council approved the text amendment.
Right, because they are just advisory committee, it makes a recommendation, it is up to the city council to make that decision. That's correct. But it was a yes vote, five to three, on the special use, as stated.
If we approve it?
Correct.
Okay. So am I allowed to ask you how much you guys paid for it when you bought the building?
I am not privy to that information. Someone knows?
That's actually public record, and it was about 1.9 million dollars.
Okay. Okay. Am I allowed to ask you how much it was listed for? Because I have a good friend of mine who was in the commercial real estate business, and that person could not find a listing for a couple of weeks, even though supposedly it was listed. So I'm confused as to where it was listed and for how much it was listed for.
Do you have information about the listing price, sir? Pardon me?
You what?
It was listed for 2.4 million, I was informed.
But for only half the property, right?
It's the whole building, but half the land.
Right. So all of the improvements, the building?
The whole building.
And 50% of the land?
Correct.
So they basically cut the property in half, so that adds up to 500,000 dollars.
Just the land, all the improvements were part of the sale parcel. All of the structures were part of the.
Were you saying there was improvements made to the building already?
No, the existing structure.
Okay.
Sir, what I do need is, could that gentleman come to the mic and spell his name for us?
Okay. Sure.
What I do need is, could that gentleman come to the mic and spell his name for us?
Would you spell your name for the record?
My name is Tanveer Syed. Tanveer, T like Thomas, L like an apple, N like Nancy, V, E E R.
V as Victor?
V as Victor, E as Edward, E as Edward, R as Red, and Syed is my last name, S Y E D. And I'm a resident of Rolling Meadows in Ward 2, and I'm a board member of ISNS, Rolling Meadows, Mushtis.
Thank you.
To answer your question, sir, which is a valid one, when the property was being listed for sale, the commercial listing broker was consulted in terms of whether to sell the whole thing or a portion that was listed. And buyers are not interested in the retention pond necessarily or the parking lot necessarily. They, you know, they want the property right on Hicks Road. And that's the property that has the highest value rather than some of the other properties that are restricted in their, in their use, like the retention pond for runoff.
Well, that could be true, but you're assuming who may or may not buy that.
Well, of course, there are assumptions to be made, reasonable assumptions, because there wasn't anyone who presented him with a proposed contract for purchase.
Well, I'm guessing most rational people in today's world, knowing what's going on in real estate, looked and saw what they saw because it was public record, what they paid for, and then the property is cut in half, and they were still asking for more money besides that.
Well, you know, even if you take minimal appreciation in typical Cook County property, it's somewhere between 2 to 4% per year, times 32 years, I mean, that's a lot of appreciation in terms of value, but.
What's 32 years?
Pardon me, not 32 years, the number of years.
Let the speaker speak. Please not have anyone from the council interrupt him. When it's your turn. When it's your time, please put your hand up and we will call on you. Thank you.
What I'm saying is since they purchased the property, a number of years had passed and there was appreciation in the property, there were infrastructure improvements made otherwise generally in the surrounding area. So the values typically do go up, yes.
Okay. Again, I would challenge that, but I won't get into that tonight. So the other thing that I just wanted to mention with the research that I did four years ago, that property was generating 155,000 dollars in overall tax revenue. Obviously, that wasn't all for the city, but for all the taxing bodies. So there is some issues there. And I know, even though you guys have been a relatively good citizen, there were some issues there where you were storing cars for Exotica Car Company with no special permits. You did repairs on your parking lot after hours with no permits done. And there was a number of times the police officers recalled to disagreements between you and your neighbor to the west. So I just would like to point that those things are out there in the real world. The last thing I would say is that, you know, when we turned this down last time, the current mayor was for this project. Obviously, the group supported Mr. Mayor with financial help in going for the mayor's job and...
Mr....
I don't think those are appropriate considerations.
We're here for clarification on the property, nothing else. Mr. Cannon.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
If I may address briefly some of the comments that were made about the overall amount of annual real estate taxes paid. We all know what happened over the last 10 years roughly, namely, the real estate market dropped substantially and Cook County was affected like all of the other areas of the state. And the property value drop was anywhere between, you know, 30 and 50%. So that also includes manufacturing district. And as all of you, I'm sure, know well, Cook County reassesses all properties based on township location every, once every three years. And they do look at the comparable values and all of the other elements that go into that equation. Most people don't understand that in terms of the real estate taxes, there are three elements that go into calculation. One is the state equalizer, which is about 3%, slightly less than that right now, to equalize Cook County with all the other 101 counties. The levy that various 15 or 20 taxing bodies levy each and every year. And then, of course, is the fair market value of comparable properties, which is the only thing that owner can appeal. But the reason for the drop was because of the change in market conditions which they had no control over. As far as the minor incidences that were raised, those I wasn't aware of, but even if all of those are true and taken in the worst light, for, you know, 30-plus years of existence and activity, that is a minor list of offenses. The federal and state law indicates, federal and state statutes in particular indicate that substantial compelling reason has to be shown for not allowing special use for religious purposes. And political considerations are not, and tax revenue loss is not allowed or permitted under the law. And the reason, as one of the members mentioned, other municipalities got into trouble is because they did consider non-permissible elements in their decision-making. So it is a dangerous area, but it is one that I think is certainly known out there in terms of the case law, what is required of municipalities. So much for that. Any other questions? I'd be happy to cover.
Mr. Gell.
Yep. So I have a couple issues that I wanted to address. And the first one is trying to bring myself up to speed with the legacy of this entire subject. And knowing that the board had previously voted against a direction for ISNS to move forward into that facility, they were actively utilizing the parking lot to the east, which is the rear section of the parking lot. And knowing that there is no guarantee to move forward in there and no guarantee that a future tenant would allow them such, that's why they wanted to subdivide and maintain that back parking. So if they had to stay in their current property, they would have sufficient parking to utilize that they wouldn't have to ask or rent from somebody else. The other thing is having my involvement with the Chamber of Commerce, though it seems a little bit counterintuitive to move from a smaller facility into a larger one and talk about maybe loss of revenue or reduction in revenue. The market stands greater chance to put a new tenant into the smaller facility that they currently occupy for manufacturing for a longer term of revenue generation by putting in a more likely tenant in the smaller facility than in the larger one. So it is a better move to allow ISNS to move forward in this regard.
Thank you. Mr. Majakis.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I had done a little bit of research on the sale and purchase time and listing of the property and everything and knew what it sold for and what you had listed for and all that stuff. But when I was checking about a week, maybe 10 days ago or so, this listing wasn't active. All of a sudden, it's active. So can I just get clarification of when it became active again? Well, right in front of me it says available.
I'm informed it is not active.
Well, right in front of me it says right here, available, 2.4 million, Michael Bishop, Baron Warner. I mean, it's public, it's right in... You can see it. But last week, or 10 days ago, it was not. It said not for sale all over. So I was just trying to see what the progress of the property has been, if it's just...
I'm not aware of any commercial broker listing agreement. I'm not doubting what the site says.
No, I know. I'm just showing you what I've...
It speaks for itself. But as far as my conversations with the board members, I was sure that it was not...
Can you see them?
Active or listed currently.
You're referring to, so it needs to be...
Perhaps the broker made a mistake, is what I would suggest, but...
You can look at it too.
Yeah.
There's no valid listing agreement in effect.
Okay. So how long has it been off the market?
When did that listing agreement expire? October of 2017.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Majakis, anything else?
No. Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Mr. Diasis. Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand some certain things. The property is approximately eight acres. It was purchased for 1.9 million. And then the current owners decided to basically split the property in half. And two years later, after they purchased it, put it up for 2.4 million. So 1.9 million for eight acres, 2.4 million for four acres. And the attorney said, "Real estate dropped, property values dropped." You just said that. So I just want to clarify those, that that's what was said. Now, moving ahead, there's no question there. I was at the Planning and Zoning Committee. The vote was 6 to 2 against a property, against a text amendment. And then the special use came up. And the question was, "Why are they voting?" And the chairman said, "We're voting if the text amendment passed. What do you feel?" And it was a 5 to 3 yes, and they said they felt that the work that was presented was good work and would be approved if the text amendment were passed. Moving ahead, Ms. Jeanne, I'm going to kill it. Conkalowski said, and I recall, that when the current property was purchased, then Alden Monroe, he said, "We have an agreement. You're not moving again." And the Islamic Society says, "Yes, we're not moving again." I hear now, "We're not moving again." To me, that means you might be moving again. Outdoor activities. I see here there's some kind of a tennis court or basketball court or something there. And Planning and Zoning said there would be no outdoor activities. Everything was to be taking place under one roof. And they said they changed it from 20,000 square feet to 47,000 square feet. So my question is, are there any outdoor activities planned within Phase 1 to Phase 5 of this project?
The answer is no.
There's no outdoor activities planned. You plan to sell the current existing church? And I see it says sometime between 2020 and 2021. What will prompt the sale of that property?
What will generate the decision to sell that property, existing property? Do you understand the question? No?
Would you mind repeating the question, please?
The current church is to be sold. And the, it says, your information said in 2020 or 2021. What prompts the listing? What forces the sale of that property at that point in time, two and three, or three years from now? In other words, what would be the strike date that you would decide?
Name and function and then...
Excuse me. Could you, okay, you're coming. Could you please spell your name for, Jeanne?
Abdul A-B-D-U-L. Last name Javid, J-A-V-I-D.
And your position with the church?
I'm one of the board members, 13 board members of ISNS. So the answer is, once we get the occupancy permit, then we'll list and sell 3950. As soon as we are ready to go there and city permits, everything is okay there, then we'll start selling this.
Okay. So as soon as you have an occupancy permit...
True.
For the new building, the old building goes up for sale?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. What takes place in the multipurpose area?
Do you want the architect? Come on in. We are building a community very similar to a church. In the multipurpose room of the church, usually there are meetings. In our case, sometimes in the eight prayers, we call it, that there are a number of more prayers that may not fit into the prayer hall. They will use the multipurpose as overflow for the prayers. We have some dining with a very small kitchen activity. It's, we are going to have a warming kitchen only. The food will be catered and will be served over there. So these are the very activities that would happen to every religious organization, Christian, Jewish, or Muslim.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And I guess a question for the staff. What percent of the... No, I'm going to hold that one. Well, those are all the questions I have for the time being. Thank you. Are there any other items on discussion? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen, for coming forward tonight.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crumstock, we're on to bonds.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council.
Gentlemen, you're free to stay if you want to have fun, but if you went home right now, there wouldn't be any hard feelings. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before you is a follow-up discussion from what we've had before, some more about bonds. We do have some items that we need to distribute to everybody. If you can take one and pass, it's three sheets. We brought back Robert Richlikke to help out in the discussion, but before we actually start, Finance Director Melissa Gallagher is going to be here to just do the placenter. What we really hope from this discussion tonight is that you really make an appointment through Finance Director Melissa Gallagher to actually sit down with staff so we can talk about the bonds and what we're actually looking for. When you actually get the three sheets that you actually see overall, we also gave a draft, and I do stress draft, of the property tax levy that we're actually looking at. So again, this is just a scenario. This is just a snapshot. And then again, it does show about a 4.7, and that would actually be with a full overall large bond. But at the same point in time, when you come in, we would like to actually discuss two smaller bonds, as you actually heard, if we have a $9 million bond and then we follow it up with another $9 million bond, that keeps us below the bank qualified. But it's one reason why we really need you to come in and actually start this discussion with staff so you can understand some of her... The third page that is actually part of this packet is actually just a summary of activities and milestones for the fire station, which is the largest part of what we're talking about with bonds. With that, I do turn it over to Finance Director Melissa Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. Working closely with the city's financial advisor, Kane McKenna and Associates, we've been doing that for some time now. Since August last year, we've been presenting information to the city council as an update as far as understanding bonds. Then at the May committee, the whole meeting, we also provided information as far as bond scenarios. And we've been continuing working with Kane McKenna on this project. Obviously, as Mr. Crumstock mentioned, the largest portion of the bond issuance would be related to the fire stations, building two new fire stations in the city of Rolling Meadows. Before turning it over to Mr. Bob Richlikke of Kane McKenna and Associates, I'm going to walk you just through a couple of items as a recap. Within the council packet, not only do you have the summary for tonight, but we also have the city's credit rating page that is also listed online on the city's website. We were just reaffirmed recently from Moody's as a AA3 in April 2018. We have a strong credit rating, which does obviously help us through the bond issuance process. Not only that, do we have a 2017 audit that was presented in June. And that audit also serves as part of the process through the credit rating analysis that we go through when we issue bonds. But then that also works through the process for the entire bond issuance. Typically, and not only does it help staff, but it helps the credit rating agencies as well, their preference is to have an audit. And so we're at good timing with that as well. As Barry mentioned, we do have before you a couple of attachments. We're going to turn that over to Mr. Bob Richlikke to go through the bond scenarios. There are complex items to that. We provided seven, but not only do you just have a one-page summary on that, there were about close to 100 pages that followed that, and we just kind of summarized it for you for tonight. And as we mentioned, what we're looking for after our discussion, and I'll reach out to you and you can reach out to me as well, but between now and August 2nd thereabouts, we'd like to sit down one-on-one to take a deeper dive into the topic. And then we're going to circle back to the tax levy scenario tonight as well, just as a review, after Mr. Bob Richlikke goes through the scenarios with you. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. What we did last time in May was look at a number of different bond issues in terms of some key variables, which I'll go over. Again, as Melissa said, there's 100 pages. We don't expect everybody to look at every page, but the main differences, to reiterate what we talked about last time, I mean, as you look at the different options that the city has and flexibility, key variables are the amount of debt, the amount of bonds that the city would issue, the term or the maturity. These things all have impact on the total debt service. And last but not least, the interest rate. As Melissa indicated, you know, the city has a very strong credit rating. You know, it's been identified in terms of things like your reserves, the fact that your home role, professional management, these are all things that were noted in the credit updates and in past credit reports. But if you look at that one sheet that we have with the scenarios, again, from a standpoint of going over the variables, if you look on scenarios 1 through 7, you'll see like, for example, in scenario 1, there's, the idea is that the city would have 15 million dollars net of bond proceeds for projects. What we did, if you move over to the right in the columns, the total debt service, that's the amount of debt, principal and interest, that the city would be responsible for over either a 20 or 30-year period. And again, you know, it's a math problem. You'll see there that if you go out 30 years, you have a smaller annual debt service number, but your gross amount is more because you're paying more interest, the meter's running longer, so it's a trade-off there. You've got a lower annual amount that you're paying, but... You've got a lower annual amount that you're paying, but over time, the meter runs, interest accrues on the amount of principal that's outstanding. In the scenario number two, there's a differential, there's a federal tax law that affects purchasers of bonds. So if you're under a certain amount, if you split your debt issuance, that 15 million between, in this case, nine and a half or five and a half million, you get a slight difference. You can see the interest rates, about 10 basis points, it's a tenth of a percent possible savings. So as a result, you do have some interest rate savings, and the annual amounts and the cumulative amounts are impacted a little bit. In scenario three, the variable, we have the same scenarios as above in terms of maturities and the split, but we just have more bonds. So again, the debt service amounts go up slightly, as well as the annual amounts. In scenario four, again, scenario three and four is kind of a mirror of one and two, where we look at the split for the, of the issuance between 2018 and 2019, in order to get a little bit of that interest rate savings. In scenario five, we look at, again, and also in six, we look at more bonds in terms of increasing that amount, and again, as both Barry and Melissa indicate, it really depends on the city council's menu of what kind of projects do you want to fund, whether it's at the, you know, 15 million will only pay for certain things, 17 will pay for a little more, and so forth. So again, what you see there are the interest rates, they stay the same for the 20- or 30-year maturities, but they go down a little bit when you split the issue. And the last scenario was kind of working backwards into what the debt service would be in terms of either 600 or 500,000 per year, and we solve for the amount of the bonds. In this case, a lower debt service amount is gonna yield, again, all things being equal, the term, the interest rate, it's gonna yield about 9 million in bonds. So again, to recap, you know, from the standpoint of where we are in the process, we updated what we did in May, not a big change, and you know, good news, not a real big change in interest rates, there was a little bit of a bump up. You know, the variable that's out there are the market interest rates, you know, in terms of things happening both on a federal level and within the economy itself. But what we did is to put a little cushion, and we added about a quarter of a percent in our numbers to, so these are a little bit on the higher side, again, in order to allow for some kind of, you know, potential volatility in the rates. But again, these are some of the variables, there's some other variables we talked about last time in May, in order to give the city flexibility, the idea of maybe shortening the call period. These are kind of vanilla bonds, they assume a 10-year no-call, and there's a penalty or premium that has to be paid prior to that if you want to redeem bonds. As we get closer to the city's decision in terms of the size of the issue and how you want it structured, we'll also explore the ability to try to determine if we could get a shorter call period. Again, the idea would be giving the city more flexibility in terms of responding to changes in the market. So, again, this would be the roadmap, this chart, as it relates to the impact of those variables. Again, the key variables are the amount of bonds that the city issues, its term, and here are the term, we're only looking at 20 or 30 years, there's some differentials. But again, this is probably the most common maturities that you're gonna see in the market. You could go lower, you could go higher, but we had to start somewhere, so we took the 20- or 30-year. And the interest rates are updated as of July 6th with a quarter percent add-on.
Thank you. This, my question comes with, right now, this is the scenario you're giving us today. Scenario will change until we go off to issue for the bonds, and how long does it take? Say you pull the trigger and say we're going out for bonds, is it three months, six months?
No, no. Hopefully not. Again, it's usually, it's gonna be dependent, the big kind of time constraint in there is the meeting and the follow-up with the rating agencies. They've kind of gotten leaner and meaner over the last few years. So typically, 30 to 45 days from, in order to get into the market, get the rating, and then have the bond sale.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other discussion on these items? Mr. Cannon?
Could you give me an idea how much more it would cost us if they're callable, just ballpark? Is it like a tenth of a percent, or is it a quarter?
That's...
Or just a...
Yeah, at minimum, it would be at least anywhere from 15 to 20 basis points, but don't hold me to that-
No, no, no.
Because that changes, but that's what you're looking at, I guess, in terms of scale. Because there is gonna be some kind of premium as it relates, especially when there's concerns about interest rate movement. The people who buy your bonds want to make sure that they're gonna get the rate at the outset that they've, it's, you know, same with like mortgage holders, they want to see that they're gonna get that rate. So as a result, it's not gonna be insignificant, you know. 15 to 20 basis points does add up, but that's what the market is looked at in the past. When we've looked at that, most folks will not fight City Hall, they'll look at the 10-year call and kind of work into that. But yeah, we research it, but in the past, you've seen, it's, there is a price tag.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And Alderman Cannon, just so you know, typically, before we do any of that, we do deal with Bob and everybody else, because if you look at some of our past bonds, for the first period of its life, it did not have calls, but near the end of its life, that's how we've been able to refinance and actually do it. So it all goes back into tailoring, as we've mentioned before, the money, but also looking at those callable. And as you know, sitting on the council, we actually have refinanced and called some of our bonds near the end of its life.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions, Melissa?
One thing. And we will look into that in more detail, so Alderman Cannon's question, we'll make a few phone calls.
So again, all that we do ask tonight is, please contact Finance Director Melissa Gallagher, so we can actually go through this in more detail and also get a read, because at this point in time, in August, we would like to bring back items that we need, so we can start working on and getting our clock ticking for money.
Thank you. That brings us on to the next, the transfer station, Barry.
This is a continuation from a discussion that we had as a staff report and some of the other discussions that we had recently about transfer stations, recycling swap, and some of the other pieces, refuse swap, and the host agreement. So we felt the staff that it's a good thing just to come back, and obviously, I'm waiting for Public Works Director Fred Vogt to come up to the front at this point. So he is here. But actually, we wanted to make sure that there were some clarifications that were actually stated, and also reiterating some of the comments that we're stating about the lease agreement and extension, and obviously, there were some questions that were brought up, and we felt it was good for Committee of the Whole discussion, for those discussions to come out, and also any additional conversations. But with Public Works Director Fred Vogt out there, he will start the conversations. We hope that the council has their clarifications at the end, and then, near the end, I do have one other comment regarding this at the end.
Mr. Cannon, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a thick packet. We felt that we needed to give you a lot of background information, the old ordinances and the like, just for your reading pleasure or for your learning pleasure as it is, because this topic goes back more than 20 years to when the city of Rolling Meadows decided about 1996 to lease the property on Birdnik Street that it used to use as its own waste transfer facility, and I won't bore you with the details in terms of setting up the Solid Waste Agency of North Cook County and all of that with regards to operations, but the city had the IEPA operating permit for its own transfer station. It basically sold it or turned it over, as you wanted to, a company called Browning and Ferris Industries at that time. Browning and Ferris, as part of the agreement, dismantled the city's transfer station, built a new transfer station. The city began receiving revenues, both from host fees and both, and also from a per-ton tipping fee, as we call it, for the refuse that goes into the facility and then is transferred out of the facility onto the large trucks that take it to Pontiac, Rockford, various places over the years. About the year 2000, Browning and Ferris, due to a number of legalities, was required to divest some of its assets. They sold the transfer station rights to a company called Superior, which was a forerunner of what's now Advanced Disposal. That lease provided what was then Browning and Ferris Industries, which is now Advanced, a 20-year term to operate the transfer station, with two five-year optional leases at the sole discretion of the operator, which in this case is Advanced. In January of 2016, when the initial 20-year lease was getting close to expiry, they notified the city in writing that they wanted to take on that first five-year option, and they are in that right now. We're in the second year of that. The second five-year lease option is also at their discretion. It's not a negotiable matter, at least, you know, they don't have to negotiate it. That would be come up in 2021, if they wish to extend that for the remaining five years of the term. So altogether, it's 30 years at the initial 20, and then two five-year options that the company can do. Assuming Advanced is still operating the transfer station in 2021, that would be their right. If they, at some point between now and then, have reasons to look to sell the transfer station, certainly that's something that would have to come back before the city council, as I would understand it, to ask the city council to accept the existing terms with the transfer station for that period. After 2026, certainly free and open as far as we can see in terms of whether the city at that point would want to negotiate with Advanced, put it out to bids, advertise it for potential other operators, would certainly want to work with SWANK and that, they are a player into the operations with regards to their transfer station, and it all kind of is tied together. There's a lot of tentacles to the waste business at this point. So our purpose for this being on the Committee of the Whole tonight, as Barry said, was to clarify that there was a lot of discussion back a couple weeks ago with, when you were faced with a number of contract extensions and new contracts, we just wanted to make sure that you had all of the background information. So we're here for any questions, if you have any.
Two that come up for, so there's an increased cost now since we did not do the five-year extension, correct? Instead of, it went from $4.50 to $6 a ton, correct?
Per ton for the city public works department to utilize the Birdnik Street Waldron facility as a drop-off point as opposed to going to Glenview. So that's correct, because of the choice of making it a three-year.
Okay, and then you said there's no cap in 2020, so we don't have a right to negotiate? Is that what you're saying? Or they just come back in 2020 and say, this is our price, and we want the five-year?
As we understand it, if Advanced is still operating the facility and chooses to request the five-year extension, they can do that, and we don't have negotiating power for that. If Advanced wanted to request some other type of arrangements in terms of the host fees or the lease, then I think we would have some opportunity to negotiate, but they don't have to. They could simply ask us to extend at least five more years at the existing terms.
Okay, so, but if we had, if the council had voted to do the five-year extension, it would have been capped at $4.50, I believe, the amount versus $6?
That was the Advanced proposal, which would have given them the right to operate the facility for five additional years beyond 2026.
So, any other questions, Mr. Budmans?
There was only capping it for one year, though, correct?
No, it was capping it through 2020, correct?
The existing lease would cap it. The five years goes from 2016 to 2021. They have one more five-year period.
Right, so they would have capped it through 2021, correct?
You're asking about the $4.50.
But they're not capping it through the end of the extension, is that correct?
No.
No, no. City council approved a three-year.
Approved, yeah. At $6. If they approved the five-year, it would have capped it, so. Sorry, Mr. Budmans, any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Cannon?
Thank you. Fred, just speaking for myself, I guess in the future, it would have been, I would have felt so much better about this, I probably made some incorrect statements at the last meeting because I didn't know some of this information, or maybe I just didn't read it properly. But when, when we have five days to make a decision, it's awful hard to get all that information together and figure out what's best for the city. I'm still confused as to why they're pushing so hard. If they can automatically get the five years, why is the big push to get it done right now? I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, but why are they insisting that they get the five years right now when they got three years to go? Since they can get it either way. I mean, we can't stop them, is what you're saying.
Want me to take that?
Take it in. I'll finish it up.
Our understanding in the discussions we've had for the previous several months with Advanced and looking to renegotiate the recycling collection contract, is that they saw the opportunity to lock in an additional five years for their operation of the facility. If we were to agree to that, they would give us a lower rate in terms of our tipping fee. That's really what it was, it was a business decision on their part.
So Alderman Cannon, they were looking at their operations long-term, and that's how it was relayed back to us, that they looked at it not just five years plus, the three years plus the five years, they were looking at it into 2030s. So that's how they projected to us, that it was a long-term operational, transfer station use and overall.
But I guess, there's a couple things that I'm confused about, and maybe you guys can make an easier explanation, so I'll understand it. So it seems to me, when I read, read through the host agreement and all that, some of the things are locked in on their part, but yet our stuff from our end are not locked in. So like, we've been getting one ton accepted at the city quarterly since 1996, that feels a lot of a dime, but yet we're locked in on that. Two years ago, they accepted this switch, and switched the stuff from, I believe, from Northbrook, they were taking that, that waste and bringing it to SWANK, weren't they? As the exchange?
To refuse swap.
And they agreed to do that, and then all of a sudden, now they walked away from that, and then they're charging us now. So I guess what I'm confused about, Fred, is I guess, why is it that they get to negotiate from their side and change the rules and the cost, but we don't get to change any of ours?
I don't think it's proper to say they walked away from it. They are still, per our waste swap agreement, moving an equivalent tonnage from their other facilities to the SWANK facilities for whatever we drop at the Birdnik Street facility. All they are saying is that that operation went on for two years, they saw that they had some transportation costs and other costs associated with their diverting. You mentioned Northbrook, I think that was one of the facilities they had been using, that they're now taking the same amount of waste that we drop at Birdnik Street over to the SWANK facility. There's costs incurred with that that they didn't realize two years ago, that's why they came back to us with the proposed cost of $4.50 or $6 a ton for that to reflect their transportation and operation costs.
But I don't want to get to change the $1 per ton that's been in effect since 1996.
And I think that goes back to, the agreement is in place, and, and Jim's getting the contract, or, he wants the mic.
Well, no, I see that it's written down, I'm not, I'm not challenging the fact that it's there. But it seems like they can change their rules and charge more, but we can't charge, we can't change ours. I mean, we're getting, we're gonna get, it sounds like no matter what we agreed to, we're gonna get charged more. And then, and then they demanded the five years, which now we find out, they can have them because we can't stop them. So I mean, I only speak for myself, but I was crazy to vote against the thing the other day, because they're gonna get the five years no matter what.
And I would go back, and it's, you're talking about a contract, an agreement that was done some time ago, and some of the nuances, you're talking about the same stuff that staff has talked about. It would be great if there were some openers, but they're not.
I also need to separate out the two issues, because they're not related, at least not at this time. They certainly could be related in the future when the opportunity arises to negotiate. But the waste swap that we started in 2016 really is independent of the operating agreement.
I understand, I agree.
That was a choice that Advanced made with, working with SWANK over several years of discussions to provide us for that. They didn't have to do that, they agreed to do that.
And SWANK didn't have to do it either.
Correct, SWANK did not have to do it either. That, we've been talking about this for 15 years, I think, on and off, really, but it was only in 2015 and 16 that we finally got all the parties to agree to it. But that could in the future be a situation, and the cost of that waste swap, part of the transfer station lease, that's certainly an option that I think the council and staff could take when it's, time is right to renegotiate that lease, but until then, it's really a separate issue.
So just as a sidebar to this, I know you two fellows have had discussions with SWANK about them. SWANK about them taking over the facility at one time. I have no idea where that discussion went, but is that something that's even a possibility still, or is that kind of just way out there?
It's way off there because we are the permit holder, and it's not germane to any discussions that we have right now, so.
Okay, I guess the last statement I would make is, I guess, I would say we should bring back what we did a couple of weeks ago and re-vote on it. I don't know if we can do that or not, but since we have to give them the five-year agreement anyhow, why, why not try to get to $4.50 then?
I'd defer to the city attorney on that.
Yes, Mr. McColl, I think we signed a contract, correct?
Well, we've got a number of contracts. We can, we could always go back, you can always, you can always go back, I mean...
Well, I guess, Mr. Jim, am I wrong in my assumption? I mean, we can't stop them from getting the other five years, so why wouldn't we want to try to get a cheaper rate, since we, our hands are tied, I understand from a legal standpoint, so I mean, we're fighting against ourselves in a way, we can't win, so why don't we just sign it?
If I could clarify, Alderman, Cannon, Advanced has the right to operate the facility for three more years and then an additional five years. What they were requesting of the city was five years beyond 2026.
Five more after that?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Sorry, over my head, I guess, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Alderman, DeSantis?
Thank you. It says here that we have the right to limit facility use to 750 tons per daily average. Are we doing that right now, or are they putting more in there?
That was amended, I believe in about 2004, to, at the request of the operator at that time, which was a predecessor of Advanced, to go up to 1,000 tons per day. The city approved that a number of years ago. I don't know off the top of my head what the average is right now, but it, a couple years ago when I last checked, it was around 800.
Okay. Okay, so, I have another question here, because I read somewhere in here that said we could renegotiate. Let me find it, and I'll come back to that, Mr. Mayor. I had it, but I had two questions and I lost where that one was.
Anyone else? You want a moment, Mr. DeSantis?
Yes, please.
Anyone else have any other discussions?
I do.
Mr. Budmans, sir?
Questions? They've been very specific about what kind of a CPI adjustment that they're going to be using and which index. Where are we at with CPI index increases and their rent is allowed by the lease? What index are we using?
I would have to consult with the finance department if they know that, or would have to look that up.
I can tell you from the current lease, it's the Chicago Ann Irwin Consumer Price Index.
And so have we been receiving full value for that every year? I guess the question is, have they been increasing at roughly the same rate that they're trying to increase our CPI?
Well, it increases, there's a range.
That's adjusted every year?
Yeah, so you've got a minimum annual increase of not less than 1.5, and a maximum annual increase of not to exceed 5%. What the actual math is every year to year, I couldn't tell you that.
The answer that Finance Director Melissa Gallagher is saying is yes, to your question.
Next question. I don't see any place where we, where at some point Advanced Disposal came to us and asked to renegotiate, but I don't see that they are in fact the people that we have the lease with.
The lease was with, was transferred to, from BFI to Superior Waste, and it has, Superior Waste became Onyx, which became Violia, which became Advanced Disposal. So the company ownership never changed, it was either acquired or merged within their corporate operations. It's the same company as we transferred it to in 2000.
And if you look at the lease, at page 23, paragraph 25, it provides that the lease is binding upon him and will nure to the benefit of the parties here too, in their respective successors and permitted assignments. So to the extent that the current company is a successor or in a sign of BFI, they have the same rights and abilities and burdens as BFI did under the terms of this lease.
Then why do we as a council, or one of our predecessor councils, had to vote on that being allowed to be transferred from BFI to a different organization? Why did that change if they were the successor?
My understanding was it was actually an assignment. It was actually an assignment that had to be approved by the city.
Yeah, in that case, it was an assignment or a sale because Browning Ferris divested some of its assets, Superior Waste bought the lease from Browning Ferris in 2000, that's why there was...
And the city had to, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
And the city had to and did in fact consent to that assignment.
Mr. Budmans, is it?
I'll you.
Any questions? Mr. DeSantis, your point, please.
Mr. Crumpstock pointed out that said, he pointed, he corrected my question, but I guess, we're collecting, the city is collecting, call it 150,000 in tipping fees and host fees, and another 72,000 in rent. I would, for the next three years, I think the council should look at taking a portion of this and subsidizing the difference between $4.50 and $6. That was done so that the council could have a negotiating standpoint in three plus five, in eight years, as opposed to three plus five plus five years. So I'd say for the next three years, we should take, we should consider looking at a portion of this to subsidize so that the residents aren't having to pay anything extra. I think that's a fair and equitable way of using some of the rent money that we're getting from them. Just a suggestion to throw out to council to consider.
Or the, I believe Mr. Cannon brought it up, is, can we go back to ask to renegotiate? You can ask anything, they don't have to say yes, but...
You can ask anything.
Okay. Because then that would resolve the issue from the previous vote.
That's another way to do it.
Yes. Any further discussions?
If there's no further discussion, I do have one quick thing, sort of a little bit close to the transfer station, because right by the transfer station, we do have a public works building, and at that...
Fred, bring it.
At that public works building, we actually have a sign shop. And seeing that this is the last meeting for Deputy City Clerk.
Didn't we do this already? No. We got lots...
Jenny's leaving us, so I just want to, so you'll always remember us.
Oh.
There you go.
Don't think she's going to forget us.
Public Works Department. We make signs, then we wrap them.
Yeah, we do. Recycle.
So we do appreciate all that Ginny has done, and we hope that Kootenya Court, not just adjudication, is a good thing. And again, my tie-in, I'm grateful that the council allows us to do it, but the transfer station is right by public works, which sort of brings us close to the sign shop. But with that, thank you very much, and we would just ask for an adjournment at...
Do we have a motion to adjourn? First, second, all fair? Opposed?
No.
Well, you can stay.